All right, let's call to order our Board of Franklin County Commissioners' regular meeting for Wednesday, May 5th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Present.
Chairway Meyer.
Present.
Now, let's have a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the one which exists, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord, and justice. All right, for invocation, we should have Pastor Mark Hutton from the Westminster Presbyterian Church in Ottawa.
Good morning, distinguished commissioners and guests. Let us pray. O Divine One, as we greet this morning, we give you thanks for the glory of the blue sky and the warm sun, the sound of creation that meets our ears, the birds chirping, the traffic flowing, and words of friends and family that greet us. God, we give you thanks for the work before the commission this morning. God, may you grant them wisdom, may you grant them a servant's heart to keep in mind the call that you have placed in their lives and that they are here to serve this county. For them, God, we give you thanks for their service, for their dedication, and for the work that they do. God, we give you thanks for the blessing that you provide each and every one of us who live in Franklin County, this wonderful community that has so much going for it. We are so blessed. God, we give you thanks and praise in the name of the One that we call the risen One, Jesus. We give you thanks and praise. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you. All right, under Correspondence Organizational Business today, we'll consider issuing a permit or proclamation for May, declaring May Community Action Month. And I was thinking I'll read that proclamation, and then Theresa Templeton's here, and she can come up and be happy for you to talk about ECAN and any thoughts you might have. The proclamation reads, whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, whereas the East Central Kansas Economic Opportunity Corporation, ECAN, was established in 1966. Whereas ECAN has a 50-year-plus history of promoting self-sufficiency for the limited income, whereas ECAN has made essential contributions to individuals and families in Franklin County in providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs such as weatherization program, housing choice vouchers, Head Start budget classes, and Steppingstone Program. Whereas community action agencies are needed as a major participant in the reform of the welfare system as we know it. Whereas individuals and families on limited income continue to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity. Whereas the poverty rate in Franklin County is 10.3% in Kansas, and the entire United States must continue to wage war on poverty by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Whereas Franklin County and ECAN have worked together to meet these needs of our most vulnerable citizens, now therefore Franklin County, Kansas proclaims the month of May 2021 as Community Action Month. So, anything you'd like to share, Theresa?
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. And I just thank you guys for partnership with us. You know, this has been a very hard year with COVID, and we have had to help a lot of families that wasn't usually in need, but this has been a very trying year for us. And with the help of our partnerships with the county, we have been able to very successfully help these families, and we thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Theresa.
All right, well, we appreciate the services you provide for the community. We need a motion to issue the proclamation.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
All right.
Second. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chairway Meyer.
Yes, and I believe one of these is for you, if you'd like to take it now or...
Thank you.
You met Theresa. All right, anything Derek, to add to Correspondence Organizational Business?
No, sir.
All right, any public comment today?
Nope.
All right, our consent agenda today includes claim vouchers in the amount of $701,587.36 in meeting minutes from April 28th meeting. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Are we including payroll?
That was last week.
Okay.
Second. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairway Meyer.
Yes. Our first item of business is a rezoning application. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item this morning will be the consideration of the rezoning for Mr. Savoli. This is a request to rezone approximately 25.2 acres from the A1 to the A2 zoning district. And this would include the rezoning of the residential estate property that was included as a part of this. This matter was considered by the Planning Commission on their agenda back in January. Unfortunately, it's taken a long time to get surveys that legally described the properties that are being considered for rezoning. So, there has been a built-in delay, unfortunately, for a number of these people, and we are trying to encourage additional surveyors to come into Franklin County to assist in eliminating some of that lag time it takes between the Planning Commission's action and the action of the county commissioners. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to you for the rezoning requests, and we support that recommendation with the adoption of a resolution to that effect.
All right. Any questions about the rezoning application in front of us? Would anybody care to make a motion to approve rezoning application 2102 to 1840?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, you can call the question.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chairway Meyer.
Yes. Go ahead with your next rezoning application, Larry. Go ahead.
The next matter is very similar in that we are considering the rezoning of approximately 29.5 acres from an A1 to an A2 zoning district. As you can see on the aerial photos that are part of the exhibits, this is very consistent with the land divisions that occurred in that same general vicinity in terms of our comprehensive plan and our zoning regulations. The Planning Commission also considered this earlier this year, and again, we had some delays relative to getting the proper legal descriptions. So, again, I would repeat that we are working, trying to encourage additional surveyor to come into the county and provide the surveys so we can eliminate this time lag. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to you for approving this rezoning request to rezone the 29.85 acres from A1 to the A2 zoning district.
Any questions on this rezoning application? It is rezoning application 2102, 1839. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Yes.
Chairway Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Larry.
Larry, I think Don's got a question.
Have we did any further research on Code's Court or...
On what?
Yeah, Larry and I have discussed it, and I've got a memorandum on my desk. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's going to be a work in progress, and that will have to come up, and it's also part of your budget consideration, I think, later this year.
Thank you.
The third item of business is to consider purchasing three pickup trucks for the Public Works Department. It's a matter we've discussed handful of times the last few months.
Yes, Commissioners, as we discussed, I believe it was last week, we have a need to replace a service truck, a tire truck, and a sign truck. We have determined that it is that we can save a little money by sourcing the cab and chassis separate from the body. And so, this first agenda item here is to purchase two 2022 Ford F-50s. Two of them would be diesel for $51,575 each, and one would be the same cab but with a gas engine for $42,601 from Shawnee Mission Ford, and the amount of $145,751 total for the three vehicles. This represents a, the savings that we're getting off of going this route is just over $37,000. And so, we feel good about that, and we would like to move forward with the purchase of these trucks.
Are they in stock?
No, sir. So, this, what we're doing today, we will not see these vehicles until sometime this fall.
And then you still have to put the other part on it?
That's including getting the truck in and getting the bodies. They'll start on the bodies soon, but they'll hang on to those until the cab and chassis get there. And it's also important to note that all the money that we're proposing to spend today has been saved and allocated in our special equipment fund.
Is there a motion to approve purchasing the three vehicles from Shawnee Mission Ford for $145,751?
This is why we have equipment replacement plans, so that we know when we're doing it, and so I would make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chairway Meyer.
Yes. Fourth item of business is consider purchasing the two mechanic truck bodies.
Commissioners, we have been working with Master Tech Truck and Equipment. They are a company that is out of Wichita. They have a location in Emporia as well, but they have several different vendors, but the paw finger vendor is who we're going to be getting most of the components for these mechanic truck bodies. We've been down to look at their shop, and they are a full-service company, so we feel like the service that we would get from them would be as good or better than what we would get from some of the other well-known truck body companies, such as Summit and Maintainer. They are on par with them. And we did solicit prices from a couple of other companies, and Master Tech came in at the lowest at $74,546 for each one of the bodies. That represents a just over $17,000 discount off their list price for each one of those bodies, so we feel like we're getting a very good deal on that. And the total cost for this would be $149,092.
Is this something you can get a government purchase price, or is this the government purchase price?
Some of the...
Some things you can't do.
Well, the truck bodies, we can get a Sourcewell discount on the cab and chassis. The truck bodies don't necessarily fall within that same program, and so this is, this represents us encouraging them to look at possible discounts for us, and that this is a response to that. So, we are getting...
They're too unique to be part of the Sourcewell program, but they were competitively bid.
That's correct.
All right.
So, in talking with all of these companies, we expressed to them how important those discounts were to our county government, and Master Tech certainly heard that and by, you know, proofing the discount that they're giving us.
And I think we talked about it at our study session, that these trucks are used every day, and that's why we feel like going with new is important because it gives us our warranty, and we know what we're getting when we go in that direction.
Yes, these two trucks will give us additional capabilities that we haven't had in the past as well.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve purchasing the two truck bodies from Master Tech Truck and Equipment? That total price for the two is $149,092.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairway Meyer.
Yes, and for that third vehicle, we need to purchase a custom sign truck body from the same vendor, and the amount on there is $99,618.78. Any questions for David?
We didn't ask you this, but when are these going to be available?
Later in the fall as well.
Okay.
They're all, the timeline to build the boxes are six to eight weeks, and then another couple of weeks to install them on the cab and chassis. It's really the cab and chassis that has the really long lead time. There's computer chip shortages and those sorts of things that are leading to extended times on delivery. So, we recognize that, but we still feel like this will all happen this year. It'll just be this fall before we put those into service.
Well, hang in there, guys. They're on their way, okay?
All right, was there a motion to purchase the sign truck body?
Make that motion to approve.
Give you a second.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Stottlemyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chairway Meyer.
Yes, all right, now staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, just a couple of quick, quick things this morning. One, I am going to ask Casey here to get in touch with a photographer. I think we're to the point now in the pandemic and all of your vaccination status where I think it's time to get an updated group photo of the county commissioners. And so, probably next week, we'll give you a date on that. We're still a few weeks out probably, but that is on the horizon. I know you had this opportunity recently as well, but if you want your individual picture updated, then certainly that would be an appropriate time to do that as well. And then, secondly, and I suspect Sheriff Richards is going to discuss this, but I wanted to touch on it as well. It's National Corrections Officers Week. It's all of you know we operate an adult detention center. Just want to express my gratitude for those folks. That's not an easy job. It's not a glamorous job, but it's an absolutely critical job, very important job, and we have a group of employees down there who are doing it exceptionally well. And so, thankful for them, hope all of you value what they provide to the organization. And again, you're taking care of folks, some of whom are at the kind of the low point of their lives, and it's not fun, but it's something that's absolutely necessary. And so, I appreciate all of our corrections officers. That's all I have today.
All right, thank you. Casey?
I am not really going to give much of a vaccine update going forward because we're kind of to that point. I'll let Nick touch on any specifics. I will tell you that we've completely vaccinated, the health department alone, 5,000, 5,240 people at this point. So, that's where we're at, and we don't see a big push for people giving vaccines. I know we had 20 on the schedule this week, so, or 20 available to schedule this week. I'm not sure where they, if we ended up filling those or not. But I do want to give a quick update about the visitor's center because last week, Dr. Ransom gave us the go-ahead to get volunteers back out at the visitor's center. So, I do plan on bringing a recommendation to the board to begin a discussion about what that looks like as far as days that we're open, times that we're open, et cetera. That all kind of has to do with the Kansas travel destination distinction and designation, I guess, and so we need to discuss that, and I would like the board to, you know, point me in the direction that you would like to see that go. So, I'll bring that next Wednesday. I have talked to Lucille Spencer, who has kind of been the liaison for the volunteers up to this point. I know she had reached out to several of you about them being anxious to reopen, and so her and I had a great conversation and discussed a lot of things, and I have sent correspondence to all of our past volunteers, asking them to please join me next Thursday at the visitor's center for coffee and pastries so they can get to know me a little better, and I can answer all their questions, and we can discuss who's available when, and see who still wants to volunteer and all that good stuff. So, I would like to also extend that invitation to all of you if you would like to join us or stop by and say hi. That's 9:00 next Thursday at the visitor's center. So, any questions?
What time was that?
Next, 9:00 AM. Yeah, next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, so.
I remind this next week.
Yes, I'll do that, no problem. That's it.
Thanks for the update, Casey. Nick, in person today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a quick COVID update. We really haven't seen a lot of activity. Six new cases since Wednesday of last week. Still seeing a decline in testing, and as Casey said, we're seeing a decrease in people contacting us, wanting the vaccine. We went to that Q-list online scheduling program, planning to do two days a week. We'll open up a 10-dose file, and if we got enough people to vaccinate them all, we'll get them. We have been working with our partners. We pushed 50 Johnson &amp; Johnson doses out to OFP this week. They still have quite a few Modernas that they're trying to get pushed out, but with it being a two-dose, they're having trouble with some of their patients, so they went in some Johnson &amp; Johnson. But continuing to see that decrease in people wanting that vaccine. Just a reminder, Walgreens is given Pfizer, so 16- to 18-year-olds can get it there. I've had some conversations with a few of the superintendents about the graduations, what that's going to look like. All of them have a decent plan to get that taken care of. We are in our final two weeks of second doses at the Bottle House. This is kind of our busy week there. We're pushing out about 150 a day of the second doses, so getting that taken care of. Other than that, I don't really have anything to talk about. If you have any questions?
Nick, we have notified the Bottle House that it's our intent to vacate after this round, correct?
Yes, I've talked to Doug, both on the phone via email, stating that we were out on the 12th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Sheriff?
Derek said this is National Corrections Week. I appreciate those kind words about our staff. This week was established in 1984 by President Ronald Reagan with the intent to, there was to honor the service of those that work in the corrections field. At that time, a lot of people, they just were referred to as guards, and it was, it's a very misunderstood profession, and that's what he kind of was wanting to highlight. And since that, since that time, it has gone from being termed as guards to get into what we call corrections officers, to more highlight what it is that they are, the service that is actually being provided there, because it's not just sitting around and making sure that nobody leaves. There's a lot more to it than that, and our staff is very dedicated, and they do a great job down there, and so we appreciate the work that they do. And it's fun to watch, because we hire there, we can hire at 18 years of age for the jail. And it has been a great experience and a lot of fun to watch someone that we hire out of the high school program to come in and work for us for two or three years, and then develop professionally and get, move into leadership roles, and just to watch them blossom in their career. And personally, it's been very rewarding, and we've seen some of those young men and women that have developed here and then have been able to move on to fulfill their lifelong dreams in law enforcement and other areas. And so, great group of people down there, and we just have a lot of respect for what it is that they do. Along those lines, we do have one corrections staff member that is down at KLTC, going through the Kansas Jail Training Academy this week, so, and he will be graduating on Friday. So, we'll have another one that is certified through the Jail Training Academy as well. So, those are good things that we do have going on there. Just wanted to give the board also an update. I know that you guys had some talk about Crestview and what's going to happen there. We've started, we have a room there. We've started working, getting all that. If it's not all out, then we're very close to having all of that out already. And also, along those lines, we've been working with David and his, and his staff. As you know, our impound lot is kind of is out there by Public Works, and I know they've got some projects going as well. And the partnership with his staff and my staff, getting those things arranged and cleaned up has been great, and we appreciate everything that's going on there. So, other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one for you. You had talked a couple of weeks ago about a bike ride across the state, and there was going to be a time to honor Sam Smith. Did you have any additional information on that?
Yes, I do. Thank you for asking that. That will be tomorrow.
Oh, good.
The bicycle ride is Ride for the Fallen. They'll be starting in Overland Park. The leg that we are participating in starts at Overland Park at one of their police departments, and will be riding to Topeka, to the Law Enforcement Memorial there on the Capitol grounds. Sam will be honored at a stop that will be at the Johnson County Sheriff's Office at the, their New Century location, which is where their headquarters is in the jail, and that will be at about 12:15 roughly. And so, we will be escorting Katie Smith, Sam's mom, to that, to that stop for that brief ceremony as well. And that did remind me as well, Commissioner, I apologize. Monday night, I had the honor of presenting the Sam Smith Scholarship to two graduates from West Franklin High School, Neveah Scott and Virginia Wright. And both of those young ladies, they are already volunteering and serving in their community, and they have the heart for service, and so that was the big thing that we wanted to honor Sam's memory in that way. And so, that's what those scholarships are for, and so those two young ladies received that, received that scholarship on Monday night, so.
Thank you, Sheriff. Larry Brandon Dustin, anybody? All right, Paul Bean.
Not a whole lot, just a couple of things. One, I want to say thanks. You've probably noticed on Facebook in the last few weeks, there's been different features of county departments, and I think Casey and the gang have... of county departments, and I think Casey and the gang have done a great job with that. I just want to thank all of the county employees, you know, health and safety is, is what they're working on, but it's also a tremendous impact to our economic development. When you have a great health department, great roads, great IT, great leadership, and just everything across the board, we're very lucky. And so on behalf of FCDC, I want to express our organization's appreciation for the county workforce. They do a wonderful job for our economic development. As you know, and I mentioned before, our biggest challenge in, in supporting our current industry and attracting new industry is workforce. So we're really trying to engage on a number of levels. One, on the education side, I presented along with Dr. Cobb's and Stella Tharp to the faculty at the senior high here about the NEPRIS program that I've shared with you in the past. So getting them orientated on it, and we'll start to promote that to the industries for their participation. Along with that, we'll start to recruit the local industry to join up for the ACT Work Keys certification that we're working on again with, with the local school district. So working on the education side of workforce. My board approved my request to enter into a housing analysis for the Wellsville I-35 Ottawa Corridor. Again, that's another issue with workforce is rooftops, and what do we need, and where do we put them? So we should have the results of that housing study and, by the mid, middle of June, actually. So that'll be helpful, and be anxious to share some of those findings with you. And so we're, we're trying to solve that issue as best we can, but on the flip side, we still have continued interest. Hopefully, we'll have two visits at Proximity Park. We're still waiting to get those formalized for this month. And then we've got another business that's interested in locating in the North Industrial Park. So still have a lot of good activity. Happy to answer any questions?
I'm hearing more and more that the government providing that extra money for unemployment is, is almost a detriment for our workforce at this point. People can't get, I mean, they can make more money staying home than they can, you know, going to work. How do we express that to the government that says, "Thank you, but no thank you"?
Yeah, it's, it's a national issue. There is an article, really good article in CNN Business Journal yesterday that nobody can find workforce across the country. People just aren't coming back to work. And it's a pretty severe situation where it's going to basically cost us GDP growth in, in the trillions unless we can get people back into the workforce. So, you know, from our standpoint, when we're struggling workforce, the good news is we're not the only ones, but it really, in my mind, positions us for an opportunity to show up industry and support our current industry by what are we going to do about it? Instead of just say, "Well, that's happening everywhere." And so that's why we're really working on it. But it's, it's a national emergency, quite frankly. We just don't have people going to work, so.
Paul, I know you'll do this, but just let us know on the county side what we can do to help.
Sure.
I mean, obviously, we have a big investment in Proximity Park. We want to see it take off, so please don't hesitate. Let us know how we can support your efforts, because it's a problem that we've got to, we've got to figure it out.
No, I appreciate that. You guys have been great partners, can't thank you enough.
Paul, I got an email from OCS County Commissioner asking about another round of CDBG funds. Is, is there anything into that?
There, there are some, excuse me, there are some funds that are out there that are available for folks that haven't received any other funding in it prior to now. I haven't seen anything that really fits, that fits our programming and what we're needing to do. I continue to, you know, we're still figuring out what the next round of money, which has already been approved, but they don't really know for what. We're waiting to give the county and the city direction, so I'm kind of in the same boat. It's kind of, some of it pops up. There was a support that finally came out for shuttered venues like the theater downtown. That was approved maybe half a year ago, and they just opened up the application about three weeks ago. So we're keeping an eye on that, but nothing really active in my, that I'm aware of right now, Roy. Good question, though. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Appreciate that update. David Lee?
Okay, so yesterday afternoon, one of our blade operators up in the Wellsville area was outblading and noticed one of our minimum maintenance roads had something unusual on it. When he went to take a look, he discovered that somebody had dumped oil on our minimum maintenance road. This is on Riley Road, about a quarter mile east of Utah Road. Whenever he got up there, there's about a 200-foot stretch where they, obviously, somebody unloaded an oil tanker of some sort. And so we contacted Allen Radcliffe with Emergency Management, and ultimately, we've talked to representatives from the Kansas Department of Emergency Management, KDHE and KC, who all will be investigating. We shared some pictures with them, and so that's really early in the, in the process, but it's going to have to be cleaned up. And so we're waiting on direction on how that will be handled. We've, we've got some photos that should be pretty helpful to those folks as they get into this, but I'm hoping that we get some information here in the next day or so on, on what needs to happen there. So that's kind of lingering out there. As far as what the, our crews have been doing, they've added some rock in some hilly areas north of I-35, down in the Williamsburg area, this time on the Delaware and Haskell Roads. There's, what we've got are rock ledges that have been exposed. We add material every few years to those, and it, over time, goes away. And so we added more material to that to make those a little better traveling services. The guys have also installed three entrance culverts and repaired or replaced five crossroad tubes since last week, so they've, they've been awfully busy. We also had a visit from a KDOT bridge engineer yesterday, actually. They, every year, they try to inspect up to 1% of the bridges in certain KDOT districts. And so this year, they've selected bridges in the, in the three southern tier districts. And so they came and looked at three of our bridges yesterday, and there's some things that, that they saw right off the bat that they would like us to pay attention to. Once I get a full report from them, I'll have better direction. But it looks like they're recommending, or going to recommend that we look at the bridge deck on the Colorado, on Colorado Road going over the Meriduzine. It seems like it's got some hollow spots in the bridge deck, so we'll need to take a look at that. And other, other things, I attended the City of Princeton City Council meeting Monday night, talked about some of their road issues that they're having in town, and we talked about some of the projects that, that they have and would like to do. And then lastly, Pat Campbell and I, and I met with SES yesterday to start talking about scope for the landfill project. And so we had a, had a good meeting with them, and I anticipate several more discussions coming up in the next few weeks as they prepare their scope and fee associated with that project. And ultimately, probably about a month from now, that'll be coming before you, and we could either study that in a study session prior, you know, to go through it, and then bring it back for a regular agenda item later in the week if, if you'd like. So, so look for that to be occurring in June. And that's all I have right at this time.
Anything from Clerk's office?
Janet said her clerk conference.
All right.
Starting today and the rest of the week, so.
All right.
The officers for it.
Explains why she's not here.
She has to be there for the next four or five years, I'm sure.
She's a good ambassador. I'm glad she's in a leadership role. She represents us well out there, so.
Great. Larry?
I did have another item I'd just like to bring the commissioners up to speed on. In Jan, late February, we were approached by the City of Princeton regarding a Dollar General store. And they requested information on what it takes to get it annexed and a lot of other things. We have responded to that, but subsequent to that time, their architect has approached the county's wanting assistance in expediting this so that they can purchase the property and start negotiating the installation and, and operation of the store in the future with sanitation and water. And getting a price with the property owner that's agreeable at all, so we are going to be entertaining the rezoning of that. It's already been scheduled to come onto the planning commission's agenda. We are working with the city, and particularly their attorney, Blaine Finch, with the annexation to go ahead and proceed with that, so that when the city has an annex, everything can be just turned over to them and they can move forward. I wanted to bring the commissioners up to speed on that, and thank you for reminding me.
Sounds great. Thanks, Larry. Let's go to commissioners comments and board reports. Don?
Yeah, I went to Rantoul the other night. It was a pretty short meeting. They had a long executive session, so I didn't stay for all that, though. They are putting new restrooms, have a guy scheduled to put new restrooms in the park, the ballpark down there. And they were meeting with a gentleman that is doing the codes enforcement for Richmond and Princeton, and I think that was going to be an executive session maybe also, but he was there, and they're still working on joining forces with them to run, to share a deal through Ottawa and Code Court. I went to Wellsville meeting the other night, and they also had a long executive session. I didn't stay for the other meeting either, but the first part, I did give a report on what the county's doing, where we're going. And Pat Burton, their planning director in buildings, didn't tell for me that they had 12 houses under building permit right now, and two more on the line. So I imagine the two on the line probably are getting hit with the, the high cost of what's happening right now, affecting everybody. But it's still, still a good sign to hear, you know, well, community, I may not be glad to hear they had 12, 12 new houses going up. I mean, you know, so that's all I got.
All right. Rod?
I don't have anything to add, Cole.
All right, I am.
I had the Food Policy Council meeting on Monday, and they had a report on the Connect Food Pantry that they started in 2019. But since it started, they have served 13,491 people in six different townships. Each time they go out and deliver, they have 17 different community volunteers. And then there's a lot of volunteers that are involved, including a lot of the kids from the high school, to help prepare all that. So it's cool to get that everything, and they have 15 different partnerships that they've developed to get that done. They are continuing to serve every other week, at least till the end of school and into the summer. They had a practice run on their Harvest to Home, which is their being able to provide food and vegetables to some of our food deserts, starting, and they're starting in the Wellsville area with their first one, to see how that goes. There are still four garden plots available if you would like to have a garden, and you don't have a place available. Three on the 11th Street plot, and one in, on the 2nd Street plot. So if you are interested in that, contact ECAN. And then Monday night, we did have, I did go to the Princeton meeting. It was nice to have David Lee there. Not only did he talk about the roads, but they were also having issues with the development there, and he was able to provide some information and suggestions on what is going on there. And then the other big news is moving ahead with the Dollar General. Everybody's kind of excited about that, and Dollar General is really wanting to move forward quickly, so it looks, yeah, they were hoping to get that in by November, I think. The guy from Dollar General was supposed to be there last night, and then he canceled at the last minute. And then they're moving ahead with painting some city buildings and just improving that community, so that's all I have.
All right, Roy?
I imagine all of us got notification of the Kansas County Commission Association meeting on Liberal Kansas next week, and I don't plan on going, so I don't know if any of the other commissioners are there or not, but it's clear out of Liberal, and it's a little bit too far for me.
Myself, Rod, Derek, and Casey attended the, we met with representatives from the Historical Society, like we all discussed, went to that meeting last Thursday, and we'll go again Happy to listen, and they wanted to show us kind of the current facility, and I guess get a sense of their needs for a new facility. And tomorrow, we'll go look at the visitor's center and happy to sit in and, and listen, but ultimately, it's going to be, you know, up to them whether we, you know, we, the county's made a, I think we all agree, is a pretty generous offer for the use of that, that building, and it'll be up to them whether they want to take advantage of it or not, but we're happy to listen and report back. But that's pretty much our role there, I would say. Anything you want to add to that? Rod?
No, that's pretty nice.
Yep. All righty. Well, with that, we look for a motion to adjourn.
Paul, make a motion.
Give me a second then.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, adjourned? Any opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.